Good evening, welcome to the September 7th, 2011 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. We do have one change to that, which I pointed out to the staff. Mr. Kurt Wade's name was omitted inadvertently, I'm sure, from the list of members present, so the staff will be sure to add that. If there's any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If there are none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We'll move right on with our new layout tonight. We'll all try to adjust to our new surroundings tonight. Certainly very nice, the way they've got everything done. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening, the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding amusement rides. The planning staff of the city of Murfreesboro is applicant, Ms. Adele.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Earlier this year, the planning staff made a staff report to the planning commission regarding whether or not the city should consider additional regulations that may apply to amusement rides that are not associated with an approved carnival that may be used as an accessory use. It was discussed that some of these, in some communities, these types of rides have been used in part for advertising purposes. At the conclusion of our report, the planning commission discussed and asked us to come back with some amendments. What we have brought are three amendments. They're relatively short, and I'm going to spell it out to you. The first is an amendment to include a new definition called amusement ride, and that would be a mechanical device designed to carry passengers along, under, around, through, or over a fixed course or within a limited area for amusement of passengers or onlookers, and includes but is not limited to merry-go-rounds or Ferris wheels. The second definition would be to expand the definition of carnival to add amusement rides within it. And the third would be to add a section to Section 25, subsection C, subsection 4, to add amusement rides accessory to a principal use except as otherwise regulated by this article, including motorized and non-motorized commercial amusements and carnivals. And what that section is about is the prohibited accessory or temporary uses, and we simply add amusement rides except those that are accessory to a carnival or a properly-approved amusement. So that is the short amendments. We believe that would meet the concerns that the planning commission vocalized during our staff meeting. We need to have a public hearing on this. After that, we need to return and discuss it, and if it's in order, we need to make recommendations for our city council.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I want to thank the staff for being proactive on these matters. You do such a good job on anticipating future developments that needs to be addressed, and wonderful job on keeping us advised on these matters, so thank you very much. The next item is the Gateway Design Overlay section, Integra Creek Apartments, initial design review for 264 units on 18.5 acres, Zone RM16 and GDO1, located along Manson Pike. Integra Land Development is the developer. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. This first item before you tonight is for 264 multifamily units located along Manson Pike, just west of the new intersection where the city has rebuilt Manson Pike and Fortress Boulevard. This property was currently a planned development, and thank you, this is shown for you up on the map, and it shows where exactly it's located. You all recently, within the last few months, re-zoned this property from a planned development to RM16 to allow for more traditional-type development, but the property is also within the Gateway Design Overlay 1 district. So this is the initial design review tonight for you, as this is the, as it will have to go through the Gateway Design Overlay review. We have reviewed two multifamily dwelling projects similarly in GDO1. One is constructed, and it's the Gateway at Aldridge Apartments that are currently located along Fortress Boulevard. The other is the continuation of that project, and it's coming under several renditions that we've reviewed. It has not been constructed, however, you did review it recently for a redo of that development as an initial design review, and they're still working on their architectural elevations and some of their site issues before they come back with you and proceed forward. The applicants are proposing a layout in which the main drive will become off Manson Pike. This will be a gated community, and there will also be an access located off Manson Pike Crossing at the rear, which comes in behind the Gateway at Aldridge Apartments. The applicants are showing that the rear access will be for residents only, but residents will have full ability to use that. They'll use it through a key fob system. Our fire department will have access, of course, to both gates so that they can operate and enter into emergency, since they are now also the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department. In addition, the applicants have attempted to meet the GDO standards in terms of separation and setbacks. They have shown a couple of units in some of their reading layouts that staff is not sure meet the GDO requirements with the carriage units, that they'll have to go and evaluate that and dimension that for us on the plans. They are also asking for a height variance, and Mr. Adele wants to speak to that at this item at some point, and I will go into that a little bit more when we go through the architectural elevations. But as far as GDO, that is the item that they have asked for that would need a variance. That's something that would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance before it comes back to you for final design review, if you so choose to think that that is an appropriate design and the right way to proceed forward. The applicants have some issues internally that we've discussed with them in terms of how we need some layouts to work for safety, and that's location of crosswalks and sidewalks, and they've agreed to go back and try to look at how to redesign that. In addition, we also still have some concerns about the drive accesses, both drive accesses and how they're designed, and they've also agreed to go back and look at those. So this is initial design review, but we expect them to have those items addressed for you before it comes back at final design review. The one-drive access over on Manson Pike, we usually ask that those be a DW1 concrete drive standard that is set forth in the Murfreesboro Street specifications. We've asked them to look at doing that as a paved access drive, and the reason for that is because of the rate of speed at which Manson Pike will be traveled. The speed limit for that, I think, is going to be signaled or signed at 45 miles per hour. We want to be able to make sure that we can easily get people who live here off of Manson Pike and into the development, and we feel that a paved driveway instead of a concrete driveway will allow them easier access. So we're going to ask them to go back and look at doing that as paved access, also moving their sidewalk forward, and also redoing their crosswalks in a stamped material so that they're visually defined for the pedestrians, and moving them in front of the crossbars so that they're in front of the vehicle, not behind the vehicle, and we want to increase the ability for pedestrian safety throughout that area. The landscaping plan is pretty intense as to what is required. Several buffers are required, as this property has water quality protection area on it and is, sits along both Overall Creek and Puckett Creek. So they will have to meet all of our floodplain regulations, and that's well documented in the staff comments, and they're fully aware of that. We've been working with them on making sure that their grading is appropriate for the site, and that they know about what all will be involved with compaction reports for any fill placed on the site, as well as making sure that any retaining walls that are built on-site are done so, are designed by an engineer, and are done so in an effort that will make sure that it preserves the safety of any buildings that are partially needed, partially supported by that retaining wall. None of the buildings will be fully supported by it, but there is one building that part of that retaining wall will bear part of the weight of that building. The landscaping will have to meet all of the GDO standards, as well as the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. It is still being reviewed by our urban environmental department, but they have reviewed it twice now and have some comments, but they are attempting to meet our ordinance. They're just not, the plan at this point is just not complete, because again, this is initial design review. But they will have to meet our streetscape standards along the front for Manson Pike. They'll also have to meet all of the GDO standards for landscaping, and they'll also have to meet any buffer requirements needed between various zone districts. I'm going to exit this for one second and go to the elevations that they provided us today. We've been working with the applicant on trying to come in with a way to have this comply with GDO, and these are going to fade in and out, but the original plans didn't really have a lot of stone or masonry content on them. They've been working with staff diligently to try to come back with the design that they could present to you. This is the building, one of the buildings they want to propose, and you can see that they've tried to increase the stone in a stair-step pattern across the front. All of the other siding is hardy plank and board and batten siding. It's all fiber cement siding, of course, no vinyl. They've tried to add details so that it's, that you can see the railings, some of the columns, and some of the additional details throughout the site, and they really try to pride themselves, they say, on their details. And this is building two, and then this is building three, which is what they want to be, the Manson Pike elevation. I'm going to go back to that one. Thank you. As you can see on this one, they've really increased the stone across the front of that building so that when you see it from Manson Pike, it has more of a stone presence, and so they, and your guidelines state that they have to have stone or hardy plank as the majority siding materials for residential in the Gateway Design Overlay. Originally, they just had the entrance columns in stone, so they've come back and added the stone on either sides of the entrance columns all the way around, and then brought it down to all of the other columns along the front. You can't tell because of the landscaping, but there is a stone base all the way around of three feet to have a defined base, and then they brought the stone up again, back up on the sides. The colors look blue and yellow in the pictures, but it's really not going to be blue and yellow. The colors, they haven't made their final selection choices for their colors, but I've told them that colors would be really important, and they're going to be a soft, soft color palette, probably a really soft green and a soft yellow, and their accent color will be off-white for all of their trim details and railings. So at this point, I think I've tried to introduce this for you. The height variance issue comes into play. As you can see, there's, it's hard to tell sometimes in these colored renderings like this, but there's a lot of ins and outs to this building, a lot of dimensionality to the roof line. And what we have run into is we've found that a lot of times in an attempt to provide an architecture of a certain style, that it requires different types of roof pitches and things of that nature to really try to speak in more of a modern-type architecture that we've come accustomed to seeing in this area. And our current rules for RM16 state that the maximum height for that zone district is 35 feet. They can design this building to be at 35 feet. Currently, it's 37 and a half feet. They can make it where they have eight-foot ceilings in the apartments, and they can make this building with a little modification to their roof line and comply with our ordinance. However, they'd like to do this type of product, as you've seen, and leave it at the 37 and a half feet, and that's why they'll have to go to BZA for height variance. And it's all indicative of the architecture and the fact that nowadays, in all of the apartments and things that you see in a lot of the residential houses, nine-foot ceilings are the preferred height. And so I think that's what Mr. Adele would like to discuss with you a little bit more in detail about, is we've encountered this a couple times before. If it was in a planned development, the height is not an issue because you could approve that as part of the planned development, but with it being in an RM16 district, we are restricted by that 35-foot height requirement, and that's, you find that height requirement in all of our multifamily zones. So, Ms. Adele, would you like to step in at this point before I continue?
Well, yes, ma'am. Ms. Logan has pretty much introduced a subject I want to bring up. As we reviewed this, this is not unlike several other site plans we've seen for the better quality apartments, where the height of the, as we define height, they're about two or three feet over the maximum height that's permitted. As she said, and she is very correct, a three-story building can be built in a 35-foot height. Now, bear in mind that height is not measured to the ridge line on the structure. The height is measured to a point that's midway between the eve and the ridge line, and that's pretty much universal across the country. That's pretty much the way height is measured, and it's about how shadows are cast, if you're wondering why you don't go to the very top of the building. The planning staff has seen this in the past. We've had one on Casey Lane, and we suggest they go to the BZA. We've had a couple others that came through as plan developments. We were able to alter those within the confines of the plan developments. This one is RM16. We're going to be facing this again. I want to return, after we're through with the site plan, to this and see if the planning commission wants to maybe look at having staff prepare some recommendations to increase the height so that this, someone who wants to build a quality apartments, who wants to spend the extra money to make them nicer, won't have to have a variance to be able to do it. And actually, I think it'd be a pretty easy change, but I'd like to come back to this at the conclusion of the site plan review under staff reports.
Okay. Other questions and comments? Ms. Jones?
I want to add one more thing on this.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, and I should have introduced this earlier. The timing for their site plan, they're moving forward at a pretty fast rate to be under construction, hopefully next year. Our amendment process will take about 120 days, so they may move forward if the planning commission is sympathetic to their design and thinks it's right. Going to the BZA with their application for this one. The amendments that we would propose could not become effective till probably right after the first of the year, so that might not be able to meet their timing needs to wait for the amendment. So I wanted you to have that in mind before you finish your deliberations on the site plan.
Before, Ms. Logan, did you have anything else?
Yes, sir. No, sir. I think that at this point, we've tried to introduce the project to you, and I'll be glad to answer questions for you at this time. There are representatives here of the developer and the proposed builder, as well as the engineer of record for this site, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Just a couple of comments and a question. I do like the dimensionality, as you call it, of the buildings. I think that looks really, really good. I like it a lot for an apartment complex. I think it looks great. And as much as I would normally say blue is my favorite color, I am glad to hear that it's going to be the soft green and yellows or whatever. I think that sounds great. But just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
There are garages around here, and then there are carriage units. What are carriage units?
The carriage units are a one-story or two-story, two-story unit, and it's more a style that, it's very similar, if you'll remember, to the Dill Lane apartment carriage units, I'm thinking in my head.
Like an actual residential unit, not a carport?
No, it's not a carport. It's an actual unit, and they forgot to submit the pictures and the designs for those. They will have them for you before final design review. We've made it known to them from a staff level that we expect the same quality on those units as we would, as you all would want to see on the three-story units, and they've indicated that they will be as the same. They wanted you to see the three-story unit because that's, I guess, more the major project and what you'd be seeing for Manson Pike, but you will be able to see the design of the carriage units and the garage units and the clubhouse, all at final design review. They just were, they just forgot to bring them. But the three stories, what we've been focusing on, because staff was really trying to work with them on the design of that, and they, they really worked to try to incorporate the majority of staff's suggestions. There were a few things they couldn't do because of just constructability, but the majority of what they wanted, of these elevations you've seen tonight incorporate staff's suggestions with the stair stepping of the stone and bringing the stone up and trying to have more of a stone presence and pronouncement to the public street. The one thing that we also talked to them about was making sure that, of course, on the backs of these, some of them have, you know, just the stone at the bottom, some just have the stone at the reveal, and then some will have the same facade as what you see on the, like on the Manson Pike. And so with the final design review, we asked them to, and they said they would, identify on the site plan which design will be used for each building so you can see it, because in the middle section of the project where you can see both facades internally to the project and from Manson Pike Crossing or from Manson Pike, we want a design indicative of what you've seen here tonight with the more stone. But the building that faces the back of Puckett and Overall Creek that is completely, there's a lot of brush and a lot of landscaping, a lot of growth back there, I don't think that staff necessarily, and of course, it's completely, it's the planning commission, would have a problem with not having the same stone amount back there because no one's going to see it. It's not going to be visible at all, internal to the development or from the public street. So in an effort to try to work with them, I think that we're going to try to do that if the planning commission so desires and thinks that's a correct approach to take. We hope to have, in fact, we will have, because it's a requirement, of prior to final design review, they're working on selecting the stone that they want to use right now, and then they'll go and match their colors towards that stone, and then we should have a material board sample for you at final design review. But staff's already indicated to them that the color selection that you all prefer, and that, you know, we usually like the white trim, and they like to do the off-white trim just because it doesn't show dirt as much, but they're not going to use a dark trim, like a dark brown or a black or anything, because they know that the white or the off-white trim kind of helps to really bring out the details, make them pop, and so they're going to use that on here. So we'll have some colors for you to view at the final design review.
Ms. Gillip.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I was just going to just say that I think, Joseph, you're right on target with the idea that we may need to look at amending the ordinance regarding the height. If raising that maximum height by two or three, four feet, whatever it takes to allow for a better-looking building, we need to do that, and I think that can be accomplished without taking away from what the height restrictions are designed to protect against. And also, I think if we go ahead and start working on that, that will give the BZA members some level of comfort when looking at applications such as this until those amendments come along to know that that is what this body has in mind for future developments.
I believe I did correct. And I think our BZA member, Mr. Halliburton, is taking note of this discussion.
I'll be able to relay it very well.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir, Ms. Jim?
Ms. Logan mentioned the ability to maybe require less stone on the back end of some of these buildings that face Puckett Creek, which will never be seen by the public or even the residents. I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I think we ought to try to do that because it's a little like a balloon. It's going to move one way or move the other, and we need to be a little flexible to that.
We would like to see the stone facades used where we really feel they'll have an impact for our community, and if there's a way to, you know, use the better facades towards the public roadways or internal where the residents really can enjoy it, and then if there's an opportunity to not have to do the stone as much on the rears towards Overall, Puckett Creek, some of those areas, then, you know, it just, they're, of course, like everyone, and we're all very aware of our, you know, trying to make the project work within the dollar figure, but still provide a project of quality to you all. And we are, they're already, you know, they've already worked to add the stone because there wasn't stone to begin with, except for on the very front arches. So that's where they find themselves and we find ourselves this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Any other comments or questions?
Chairman Lamb, I want to add just one thing. And this is really about apartment complexes and part of what maybe the public's witnessing. Details are not complete. This is initial design, and so it's still malleable to some considerable extent. But an apartment complex of this size is really complex. This is a campus, and it's not like one building with one little parking lot and a single row of landscaping around. This is, this is very interrelated. The grading of the land, the field, the placement of landscape, and the placement of buildings, the building materials, all that needs to be in harmony. Ms. Logan has spent a lot of time, she has a way of worrying about things for some reason, I don't understand, but she's spent a lot of time working with the applicants trying to get it to this shape. There are details that still need to be worked out. They will be worked out before final design review, but if there's things that need to be changed, tonight is the time to be giving the applicants the idea of what they need to do to finish their homework before Ms. Logan finishes up with them.
I tell you, if they've passed the Ms. Logan test, they've gone a long ways to meeting the approval of the planning commission, as far as I'm concerned. Any other comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to Plats and Plans, we have one item under that tonight. That would be Puckett Station, Section 3, a final plat of nine lots on 6.11 acres, Zone PRD, located along Pretoria Run. Puckett Station Partnership. Ms. Ely, good evening.
Ms. Logan.
On Puckett. Oh, I'm sorry. Me, not me.
I knew they were all so mean.
Never. Good evening, anyone.
That's my fault. I'm sorry. This next item is a nine-lot subdivision that is for Section 3, Phase 1 of Puckett Station. You all recently reviewed the preliminary plat for this, and they're moving forward with trying to continue on in this development, which is always a good thing. We like to see our subdivisions healthy and moving forward, and they are working to try to, I think, get approved construction drawings through our engineering department right now. And they would, of course, like to go ahead and have ready to get recorded as soon as possible their final plat. This area is located in a flood-sensitive area because of water quality protection areas and also because of the Overall Creek. This is very close, in fact, to the project we just saw. This is also located over off of Manson Pike and Fortress Boulevard, and so in an area that's seeing a lot of growth at this time. The plat is very straightforward, simple, and they've addressed just about the majority of all staff comments. They had questioned about a note on the plat, and we agree with their assumption about that the sidewalks have to be installed prior to certificate of occupancy. And they've also added the builder information to that so that both the owner and the builder are responsible for installing the sidewalks. We really want to try to get complete sidewalk networks in our subdivisions when possible. And they've also added their notes concerning the requirements for elevation certificates. The one note that we would add that they asked, that we would ask that they add to this plat is that lot number 119 is the one lot not shown within the 100-year floodplain along Pretoria Run, along the western side of Pretoria Run. However, they have established an elevation, pad elevation and floor elevation based on survey, and we want to ask that they add to a note that an elevation certificate for that will be required. They've pretty much covered all the other lots, but since they've actually established an MP and an MFE, we just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle. Staff just wants to make sure whoever buys that lot knows that they're going to have to meet a pad elevation and an MFE. And we looked at the minimum, their grade right now is a 574, and I think they set that pad at 574.4 or 574.6. So if it had been graded as such, we wouldn't worry about it as much, but since there is still a little bit of pad that's got to be elevated, we just want to make sure that the future homeowners are aware of it, and the builder, more importantly. So with that, with that one comment, otherwise, we're in good shape, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from Ms. Logan or Mr. Huddleston? If none, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to staff reports and other business. Ms. Logan has one item under other business we need to consider. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If you are familiar with the Neely property, it is property located along Osborne Lane, and it terminates at the end of Madison Avenue. The property is trying to be subdivided currently into a two-lot subdivision. That's an administrative subdivision that's under state law. Staff has the ability to approve in-house. However, during our review, it was noticed that infrastructure improvements were going to be required. They're going to have to extend service. They're going to have to extend service to both lots. It's currently serviced by Septic Tank, as well as do some repair work to the roadway at the terminus of Madison Avenue. Once upon a time, it was determined that Madison Avenue, which is part of, I think, the Brookshire subdivision, was going to maybe extend all the way to Osborne Lane. It's become evident over time that that connection will not happen, and it's not really needed to service that area. So the property owner is trying to do a two-lot flat to sell a portion of the property so a gentleman can build a house. We're trying to expedite this for them because of the, some of the roadblocks that they've encountered unfortunately along the way. A lot of times, two-lot subdivision is a very simple administrative process, and because this one had some extenuating circumstances with the continuing extension of services, it has definitely delayed the process for them. So staff would ask tonight that you approve the preliminary plat for that two-lot subdivision under other business, and that it meet the requirements that, we would also ask that we, that you allow staff to consider that as an integrated subdivision site plan when we review it, that it would be allowed to do so because we're trying to allow them to go ahead and proceed forward with building permits, and that would allow them to have their sewer completed prior to C of O. Otherwise, the subdivision regulations require that the sewer has to be completed before they can ever even subdivide the property, and the gentleman who'll be installing it wouldn't even own the property. So we would ask that you approve that, subject to all staff comments tonight, as moving forward as an item under other business, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or any objections to that proposal? Sounds reasonable to me. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, based on staff comments.
Second.
All in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Any other staff reports, Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir, I want to return to the matter of the building heights and the multifamily zones. In our zone ordinance, height is regulated in Chart 2, the bulk regulations, and it specifies that in the RM12, RM16, and the RM22 districts, that the maximum height is 35 foot. However, it also provides that for multifamily dwellings in the RM22 district, and there is zero development in the RM22 district, by the way, it would allow a maximum height of 60 foot. And that, what, our zone ordinance does not specify the maximum number of stories. It specifies the maximum height. And height, as I alluded to earlier, or I mentioned earlier, is measured to a point that's midway between the ridge line and the eaves, and it's about how shadows are cast. As I mentioned earlier, we're encountering this more and more frequently, and for the, I guess, better amenitized multifamily units, which equates probably a higher rent or maybe even a better clientele, the roofs, they want to put more into them, and higher ceilings is one of the things they want to add. Our ordinance seems to be putting a limitation on that for those that are in the RM16 district. And it seems from the discussion that the Plan Commission is interested in allowing a little bit more height. One thing what I, what I have in mind to do is to hear what you had to say on the issue tonight, if there's anything else you want to add, and come back with recommendations at our next meeting to schedule a public hearing in the first part of October. So one of the things I want you to maybe examine for a moment, are you interested in allowing a fourth story on a building? We don't regulate the number of stories. We regulate the maximum height. We could probably get four-story buildings with 50 foot, but with 45 foot, we probably couldn't, 40 foot, we could not. Most of the three-story buildings that we've, that's been bumping into this problem have been right at 37 or 39 foot. So 40 or 45 would probably take care of them, but not allow the extra story. 50 foot would probably allow the extra story. So I want to hear some discussion from you on that real quickly, if you wanted, we're interested in allowing another structure. I will tell you this, I believe at some future date, we may be looking at this anyway because of considerations like stormwater management or increased density within the city, and it may be several years out. Where we do want to encourage people to have smaller building footprints and go up higher. Higher, when you have taller buildings, but you have the same density, you have more green space on the property. More green space is good for water quality, as we're told, and it makes sense. So we may at some point want people to go taller with multifamily structures and maybe maintain the same density. We may not be ready for that now. I'd like to hear from the Plan Commission to see, so I'll have some direction on how to come back to you at the next meeting.
Well, tonight's proposal was primarily a small request to allow for better amenities to the property, which, you know, by adding the extra pitch to the roof, makes a nicer building, allows for nine-foot ceilings in the apartments, and I think all that's very good. When we start getting into four stories and 50 feet and 55 feet and all of that, it's a different story. And yes, we'll have less density with more height, but you've got to have parking facilities for them too, so, you know, it's going to be a trade-off in that respect. So it's worthy of discussion, though, I think, at future time. We need to study the matter quite a bit more. Ms. Gillip, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, I personally am not ready to look at adding an ability to have a fourth story or higher at this time. I know that day may come as the city continues to grow. Right now, I tend to look at it more from the focus of the type of issue we're dealing with tonight, and that is adding to the aesthetics of a higher-end building and adding those extra few feet that would allow those higher ceilings, but not coming into play of adding a whole nother story of a building. I would say that we look at adding, raising the height restriction from 35 to 40, 42 feet, whatever we take to be able to have nine to 10-foot ceilings in there.
What I will be doing is checking some of the plan development applications to see what their problems were with more precision. I'm recollecting rather than having a number that I've seen before. It seems like the 37 and the 39 foot have been numbers that we've been bounced into before.
Okay.
For three-story structures.
Ms. Jones, you have a question?
Mr. Adalot or staff, is there a requirement in the International Business Code that at a certain height you require elevators?
I would have to defer to our building department on that. I'm not sure. I believe there is, but I don't know what it is.
Whatever it is, it's going to fall under this 39, 36 that we're talking about in this case, but down the road, you know, that may be pertinent to what we're looking at. But I think that when we have an opportunity to improve the view of the buildings, the efficiency, the in-use, the ceiling heights in the development, that we need to look at that because it just makes it better for everybody. So I think we're all agreeing on the same thing, basically.
Well, what I'm hearing is, don't allow more height, don't allow enough height to encourage a fourth story, but allow enough height to allow a third story to be done well.
That's basically what you're hearing.
That's basically it. And actually, if you want to say that number of stories not to exceed three within that, if there's some other protection we need to add in there as well, unless we're absolutely certain that there's no way to try to squeeze another floor in with whatever number we pick.
I'm going to examine some of the plan literature, and it may be that we place a high, a story limitation, because currently we don't have that, but 35 foot has effectively limited it to three stories. But that's, that will be one of the avenues I will investigate in what I bring back. I understand, I think.
Mr. Adalot, how many applications have you had for four stories?
We've not had any applications during my tenure for four stories. About the only four-story multifamily building that comes to mind would be the Westbrook Towers, and I think it may be five or six. And it really predates my tenure with the city. It's, it came about in a little bit unusual situation anyway.
Okay. Mr. Adalot, do you have any other staff reports or other business?
Yes, sir, I do. I have become aware that I may be facing a constitutional crisis on Wednesday in two weeks at our day meeting, and the crisis involves that the chairman and vice chairman both have announced that they have opportunities that may cause them to be unable to be in attendance at the Plan Commission meeting. Here is my problem. I need to have at least four members, and of the remaining members, will there be able to be four of you present for a Plan Commission meeting? I can handle the rest, but if I don't have a quorum, I can't have a meeting.
You're talking about the 21st?
The 21st, and it will be a day meeting. And it will be an interesting day meeting. I promise you that.
I will be here.
You have one commitment?
I'll be here.
Two?
Three. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I'll be here till 2:00 or 2:30, and then actually?
Okay, we'll be able to make that work.
Okay.
Okay, so we can work with that.
And Mr. Halliburton's nodding?
Yes, I'll be here.
Okay, well, we will definitely maintain our scheduling.
And on that day, you'll elect a chairman pro tem.
That's right. I will introduce the meeting, I'll call it to order, and first thought of my business will be to nominate a chair pro tem from the floor.
Okay.
So one of you who will be in attendance will have an opportunity to preside.
It's probably a coup.
That's right.
Any other business, Mr. Adalot?
That's all the business I had.
If there's no other business, we stand adjourned.